Gray is absent. Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson is absent. Mr. President.
Please stand for the pleasure invitation by Councilmember Amy Nelson.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would just like to take a moment. I think we all woke up this morning and realized that there was an Airbus and a plane went down over the French Alps. And I believe it was 148 people that I believe lost their lives this morning. Just because we're all the way over here in Omaha, Nebraska, I think that our thoughts and prayers could go, should go out to all those families who have lost loved ones in, I think, Spanish and French and German. So, just a moment of silence for those who lost their lives. Thank you.
City Clerk's certified publication on the day record on March 20th, notes for a pre-council and regular city council meeting, March 24, 2015. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in White Binder on the East Wall of Legislative Chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law and may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic devices.
Zoning ordinance on final rigging plan for attachments, items five through seven of one case. Five is ordinance to rezone property located southeast of I-680 in Irvington Road from Development Reserve District to General Industrial District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Six is resolution at the plat entitled Seton Industrial Park Lot 2 is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Seven is subdivision agreement and A is a request by the developer to lay this over two weeks and continue the public hearing, April 7.
Is there a motion?
Motion, a second.
Roll call. Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's laid over two weeks, five to zero. Eight through 10 is one case. Eight is ordinance to rezone property located generally east of 20th and James Street intersection from R-435 Single Family Residential District, high density and general industrial district to general industrial district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Nine is resolution at the preliminary plat entitled Northeast Joint Use Facility, replat one is hereby accepted. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Ten is the replat transmitted herewith entitled Northeast Joint Use Facility, replat one is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearings on numbers eight, nine, and 10 are today. Are there any proponents?
Hi, my name is Matt Sutton with Shermer Associates, here on behalf of the city to answer any questions.
Thanks, Matt. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed? Second, roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Eight through 10 passed seven to zero, or five to zero. Item number 11, ordinance to rezone property located at 4958 South 36th Street from Heavy Industrial District to R-4 Single Family Residential District, high density. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing number 11 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Eleven is passed, five to zero. Item number 12, ordinance to rezone property located at 505 North 41st Avenue from R-3 Single Family Residential District, medium density to R-5 Urban Family Residential District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 12 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Jerem.
Is, maybe you know this one, Dave. I have a couple of questions.
Dave Fenslaw, City Planning.
Dave, is this an existing structure?
Yes.
And is it currently out of compliance?
Yes, it is.
And did this go through without objection?
Yes.
From the Jocelyn Castle?
Yeah, we had some correspondence, at least one letter of correspondence saying that they didn't want to see to go to multifamily. So, and R-5, the duplex is allowed. The duplex has been there since 1920. We went back and researched as far as we could. And back from mid-'50s to mid-'70s, duplexes were allowed in fifth residential. And then when we converted the zoning, it went to R-3, so there's no problem.
Who's the applicant?
I don't have the file in front of me. James does.
Yeah, Chris, to answer your question, currently it's not in compliance because it's a duplex that's zoned R-3, so.
And was it an individual who wrote in opposition or the neighborhood association?
Wasn't necessarily opposition. The one that I read, it was just a concern.
Okay. Because generally there, they've been trying to go the other direction on the zoning, on what had been, you know, the illegal conversions to go back to single families. And I was just wondering why this one's deviating from that with recommended approval.
Well, it goes back to 1920, so, I mean, it's been a duplex for a number of years. So, to say that it was illegal.
So, would it have been converted when the zoning would not have prohibited it?
At some point, the zoning was converted. That made it non-conforming. And we have those all over town. And recently with the banks and loans and what our code says is if it's a non-conforming use and it's destroyed beyond 50% of the cost to repair it, then it can't be rebuilt, so.
Mr. Thiel, did you figure out the applicants?
James Dale, City Planning. I believe you're referring to an email we received from an individual. They raised some questions regarding about the number of units in the house based on gas meters, but it...
Was that resolved?
I'm sorry?
Was that issue resolved?
I'm not sure if that's still under review or not at this point. It further though states, we would not be in favor of R-7, but would support the R-5 rezoning application. So, what they're indicating is they would support the R-5, but they wanted us to go out and send a zoning inspector out to check on the property.
So, how many people, how many units could there be in the R-5? Is it R-535?
Two.
That is a duplex, too.
Two, yes.
All right.
Thanks.
You bet.
Second, roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
No.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirteen is past four to one. Or 12 is past four to one. Thirteen is ordinance to rezone property located at 1503 North 58th, or 58th Street from R-435 Single Family Residential District, high density to R-5 Urban Family Residential District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 13 is today. Are there any proponents? Please. Please. And you should name an address, please.
Dave Edwards, 1503 North 58th Street.
Okay. Into the mic, please. There you go.
Dave Edwards, 1503 North 58th Street.
Perfect. Thank you. And I believe the case with this one is just conforming to an existing use, right?
Right. It's been a duplex for, since 1953.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
And they rezoned it, the city did, for their own reasons, I guess.
Yeah.
To a single residence.
Okay. Any other proponents today that want to speak? Any opponents? Public hearings closed? Is there a motion? Second, roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
No.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirteen is past four to one. Item number 14, ordinance to amend section one of ordinance number 40154, correcting the rezoning of Lot 2 from LC Limited Commercial District to LO Limited Office District. A planning board and planning department recommends approval of the ordinance.
Public hearing on number 14 is today. Are there any proponents? See, none any opponents. Public hearings closed? Second, roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Fourteen is past five to zero. Ordinance on final rigging plan for attachments. Item number 15, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for Altec Business Park to allow automotive sales on Lot 2 at 3880 South 149th Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 15 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed? Second, roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Fifteen is past five to zero. Item number 16, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use development district agreement for Maple Creek to allow additional signage located southwest of 162nd Street and West Maple Road. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 16 is today. Are there any proponents? Opponents? Public hearings closed? Second, roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Sixteen is passed, five to zero. Seventeen and 18th and 19 are one case. Seventeen is a resolution of preliminary plat entitled Security Place, located northeast of 35th Avenue and Farham Street along attached conditions except in preparation of final plat is authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 18 is the plat transmitted herewith entitled Security Place, located northeast of 35th Avenue and Farham Street is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 19 is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearings on numbers 17, 18, and 19 are today. Proponents, please. Any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray, or Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Seventeen through 19 are approved, seven, or five to zero. Item number 20, resolution of preliminary plat entitled Shadow Glen North, replat one, located northeast of 168th and Locust Street with a request for a waiver of, for lot frontage along attached conditions except in the preparation of final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 20 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Fullenkamp.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is John Fullenkamp. My address is 11440 West Center Road, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a request for approval of preliminary plat for a 33-acre parcel, which is about on the east side of 168th Street, about halfway between Blondo and Pacific outlined. It's everything but this little lot right here. Comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the department and the planning commission. There are three phases to this development. First, total of 63 lots, approximately 30 lots in the first phase, 30-some lots in the second phase, and then 108-unit apartment complex. It is in conformance with the master plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty, adopted, five to zero. Item number 21, resolution of preliminary plat entitled Blondo 186, located northeast of 189th and Blondo Street. Attached here to and made part of Exhibit A with a request for a waiver of the cul-de-sac length maximum from 600 to 715 feet long, attached conditions hereby accepted the preparation of final plat. Hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 21 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Doyle.
Afternoon. Brian Doyle, 11440 West Center Road, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me today is Kyle Bull from E&amp;A Consulting Group, the engineers for the project. If you have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-one is adopted, five to zero. Item number 22, resolution that the revised preliminary plat entitled Falling Waters, located northwest of 192nd and Harris Street along attached conditions except in the preparation of final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing number 22 is today. Proponents, Mr. Bouger.
Good afternoon. Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of the applicant today. This is a revised preliminary plat on 11 lot, commercial subdivision at 192nd and Harrison Streets, and planning department and planning board have recommended approval. We have to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See, none any opponents. Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-two is adopted, five to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda items number 23 through 31 shall be laid over two weeks for publication and public hearing. Pursuant to City Council 70, agenda items 32 and 33 shall be laid over for two weeks. Special use permit, religious assembly, item 34, resolution, special use permit, application submitted by St. John's Lutheran Church for a major amendment to allow religious assembly in a development reserve district, environmental overlay district located at 4519 Shelby Street is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearings continue today on number 34. Opponents, please.
Pedro Vargas, Omaha Neon Sign Company.
Thank you. Anything new you want to share with us from last time, or?
We went back and revised it to meet the 12-foot setback, built up a retaining wall on the backside, but maintained the six-foot overall height setback on the front side. And the church is going to just have to take out the bushes completely then for a view, to be able to view the sign from Shelby Road.
Great. Thank you.
And I have some new plans here if you'd like to see them.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is the, this is the new design, with the front side being six foot tall and the backside being six foot tall from the retaining wall that we build up. And we'll put the grade in there to be level with the ground as it comes off the hill. This kind of better shows you how it will sit, meeting the 12-foot setback. These bushes here will all have to be taken out. That's where the property line begins. And then your 12-foot is from here, back to the leaning edge. We tried to cut them down a little bit and move the sign further up the hill earlier and get the setback waiver, but we were unable to do that, so we went ahead and met the full 12-foot setback.
Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Fenslaw, you want to come? I think Mr. Jerem has a question for you.
Dave Fenslaw, City Planning.
Dave, can you confirm that this is compliant with the code?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So, you're now in support?
Yes.
So, the motion to approve covers your, what the conditions would have...
Correct. Yeah. So...
Roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirty-four is adopted, five to zero.
Thank you.
Special use permit, automotive sales, 35, resolution, special use permit, application for, to allow automotive sales in a community commercial district for property located at 11714 West Dodge Road is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And B is an amendment requested by the applicant to change the hours.
Public hearing on number 35 is today. Are there any proponents? Please come down.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I'm Susan Faber, and Blackin Beach, 7600 County Line Road in Burr Ridge.
So, I think you're on thirty, number 36, right?
Oh.
So, we just want to enter early. That's okay. We'll come right back to you. Are there any other proponents on number 35? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Roll call. Gurnat?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirty-five is adopted, amended, five to zero. Item number 36, special use permit, broadcast tower, resolution, special use permit, application submitted by SBA Communications for a special use permit to allow a broadcast tower with a waiver of height to allow a 105-foot tall tower in a development reserve district for property located at 16140 Ford Street. It's hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 36 is today. Before we get started, I know we have many folks here to speak to this item. Can I just get a sense of hands? How many are here in support?
Well, opposition.
Support.
Support.
And now, and now, opposition, please. Okay. And I have opponents who intends to speak today, just so we can get a sense of how long the public hearing will be. Great. Thank you.
They're already committed.
We'll let you change your vote. Okay. So, we'll start with public hearing, and we'll also give the applicant a chance for rebuttal if she feels she needs to. So, please.
Good afternoon again, members of the council. I'm Susan Faber. I'm with Blackin Beach, 7600 County Line Road in Burr Ridge, Illinois, here today on behalf of SBA and Verizon Wireless regarding their special use permit application for the proposal of a new 75-foot monopine tower located on the Stone Creek property at 16140 Ford Street. We've submitted our complete special use application packet, and I respectfully request that that become part of this hearing. SBA is a leading tower owner. They lease spaces on their tower to wireless carriers such as Verizon Wireless. Verizon's the largest voice and data network in the nation. And the proposed tower, this proposed tower and the installation, is a capacity site for Verizon Wireless. It's to provide additional capacity for faster data speed for Verizon's customers. As you know, I appeared before the Omaha City Planning Department on Wednesday, February 4th, and we did receive favorable approval at that time. As part of that approval, there were some recommendations which we have adhered to. Compliance of revised tower elevations for a total height of 75 feet. We've submitted those drawings to the planning department. The capability to, for colocation for at least two providers. We have agreed, of course, that that can be done. Compliance of site and landscaping plans. And then each year, a submittal of annual, submittal of annual report in January. And finally, government access easement for public safety. We have agreed to all of that. In addition to that, we have responded to all of the telecommunications standards of the City of Omaha Code, and we did meet all of the criteria. Your approval of this project will allow Verizon to continue to maintain excellent and reliable service in the City of Omaha. The approval will also allow a future carrier to do the same. So, thank you very much. I can take any questions now.
Thank you. I think there may be some along the way.
Okay.
Any other proponents that want to speak today? Okay, we'll go to opponents now.
Okay. My name is Lynn Heller. I live at 6503 North 159th Street, President Festerson, and honorable members of the Omaha City Council. I am and have been a Stone Creek resident since 2002 and have been a Stone Creek HOA director since the HOA Board's inception. The Stone Creek Homeowners Association opposes the application for special use permit C-8-14-220 before you today. I would like to submit 252 signed Stone Creek resident letters of opposition to this... At this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Troy Meyerson, who will be presenting arguments in opposition to this application on behalf of the Stone Creek residents, of which some you've acknowledged earlier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Troy Meyerson, 409 South 17th Street. I'm here in opposition of the application before you, on behalf of my client, the Stone Creek Homeowners Association, which you saw, many of which are in attendance today. The principal reason why we are opposed to this application is because the applicant has failed to comply with the City of Omaha's clear and express guidelines, as stated in the City of Omaha telecommunications facilities performance standards and as implemented through the City of Omaha Wireless Service Facilities Application Checklist. At the planning board meeting on February 4th, 2015, Ms. Faber, the Blackin Beach representative who just spoke, was asked if there were other sites studied and why those sites didn't work. She stated that no other places were studied, only this site. The applicant had just looked at other sites by looking around, and that this site was chosen because of a willing landlord. By their own testimony, applicant, the applicant has failed to analyze alternative sites for the proposed cell tower in contravention of the City of Omaha's local standards and policies. The City of Omaha telecommunications facilities performance standards emphasize the importance of appropriate citing of telecommunications facilities. The Wireless Service Facilities Application Checklist further makes clear that the applicant must evaluate alternative sites for the proposed tower, including demonstrating why existing public, community, or institutional facilities cannot accommodate the proposed tower within the service area. The applicant did not submit any analysis of alternative sites and testified that it failed to perform the required analysis. Although it does appear that a permit would be required for the Concordia site three tenths of a mile to the east of the proposed site, such facility meets the interests of the the proposed site, such facility meets the interests of the city in sitting the proposed tower at an existing community and/or institutional facility. I'd like to submit a copy of a letter from Rob Cooksey, the head of schools for Concordia Lutheran Schools of Omaha, in which he states that the school is interested and will be cooperative with an effort to place a cell tower on their property. We reached out to Mr. Cooksey recently, and he reconfirmed the subject matter of this letter. May I approach? While we believe that this alternative site is a viable option that would be compliant with the interests of the city's performance standards, we do not pretend to know whether this is the only other alternative site that could be reviewed and investigated. All we know is that the applicant has admitted that it did not meet its burden to evaluate other viable sites in the area and try to locate a site that would be more compliant with the city's espoused guidelines. The application at issue is distinguishable from the U.S. COC of Greater Iowa, Inc. case, where the court found that the city of Omaha's denial of that cell tower application violated the Telecommunications Act. There, the applicant thoroughly evaluated at least ten other proposed sites and presented engineering evidence of why these sites were inadequate. The court relied on the fact that U.S. COC explored all reasonable alternatives to the proposed site in determining that the city's denial of the application would have the effect of prohibiting the provision of wireless services in the area in violation of the Telecommunications Act. Because no other alternative sites in the immediate vicinity, including the Concordia School site, have been evaluated by the applicant as required by local standards and policies, denying the cell tower application at issue does not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services in the area. For these reasons, we ask that you deny the application before you. If I may approach, I have put together for your review and consideration written statements that can be used by the council should it choose to do so in order to assist you with detailed reasons for denying the application before you in compliance with the Telecommunications Act. And I'm available for any questions, should the council have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents that want to speak today? CNN will give the applicant a brief rebuttal if she'd like, and I'm sure there'll be some questions.
I would like to respond to the issue of look...
Would you keep your...
Susan Faber with Black and Beach. I would like to respond to the issue of looking for other locations, but more specifically, I'd like to respond to the question about the search ring and why this site is optimum for SBA and for Verizon Wireless. These search rings are for capacity sites. They are very, very small, less than a third of a mile. Upon researching the search ring, it was determined that the golf course, that area, is the center of the search ring. This is an optimum site. When the site was viewed and it worked for Verizon, it also, though, worked for SBA, the owner of the tower, because it will allow another carrier to co-locate on it in what they see as an optimum location. I know a third of a mile, a half of a mile, seems like a really small area. However, it is, it's the optimum location for the site, and that's why they chose it. They're very tight. It's not as though we had a mile to look for others, for other sites.
Okay. Thank you. We'll close public hearing. Mr. Garnant.
Thank you, Mr. President. He's here. Dave, yeah, both of you come down.
Yeah.
I'm going to talk to both of you. Go first. Name for the record, Alan.
Alan Teal in the City Lot Department.
Have we been down this road before?
Yes, we have.
Do we... If the council would vote against this application, as I would call it, our reasons for the opposition would have to be explicitly stated in the document of denial. Is that correct?
That's correct. The federal law requires that if we deny them, then, well, first of all, there has to be substantial evidence in the record supporting that denial, either testimony to this council and/or documents that have been submitted to the council. And then after the denial, we have to send a written letter to the applicant listing the grounds for the denial and relating that or tying that back into the evidence that's on the record.
Have we talked openly, publicly about what wouldn't qualify as a reason for denial?
Well, one thing that the federal law doesn't... One thing the federal law says is not a reason for denial is the fear of electromagnetic radiation affecting the health of nearby people. It specifically says that you can't use that. That's the only thing that the federal law says that you absolutely can't use. Otherwise, I guess it's just kind of common sense as to what does or doesn't make...
Thank you.
Make the argument.
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning.
Has the application, has the applicant met the requirements that the planning department operates under for this to reach the level that it's at right now?
Yes.
Okay. And that process includes what high points?
Well, obviously, it's a special use permit, so the applicant submits that documentation to the department. And we have an internal checklist that we use to make sure that the case before us and that has been applied for has the required and the necessary information for us to evaluate any certain site. And so when staff looked at the application, the complete application, we felt that there was enough information in that application for this site, as we do other sites in kind of developing areas of the city.
Do we have, or does the planning department rely a lot on the expertise in this particular area, telecommunications being that specific area, as opposed to having an individual thoroughly schooled in the planning department that can speak?
Yes, we rely on the applicant and their engineers very much. So the information that we get, we don't know their optimal search rings. We don't know where exactly they're going to build their entire network. But when we receive an application for a specific site, we look at that information for that site, and yes, we do rely on their personnel to provide the engineering expertise to where these should be located. Staff in the planning department is... We don't have a RF engineer on staff to determine if this is the exact location. So we do rely on the applicant and the representative. What, when we look at it, we look at our performance standards, where towers should be located, and when, depending on what zoning district they're in, there are some standards that we apply. We look at their coverage maps. We look at a lot of information they give us to make a land use and a planning decision based on our standards of trying to build a complete network, trying to limit the amount of towers, and trying to most appropriately locate them.
Okay. So there's also a global perspective during your review?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Milton.
Yeah, if I could, and, well, Dave, before you sit down, Mr. Fanslaw, what alternate locations were presented to you that were evaluated by the cell phone company?
We have a phone call from me and Mrs. Faber, or somebody else in the organization, said that they did look at the Concordia site. The alternate locations, we took out the narrative from their application that specifically says they've looked at alternative locations. So if, I mean, maybe she's better to answer which ones they looked at, but...
Well, actually, I think she admitted they didn't look at any, so I was just wondering if they presented any to you.
They did not. We had a phone, a staff member had a phone conversation, said Concordia was looked at.
And that was enough to...
Well, that...
Find that they looked at alternative...
That and the narrative in their application that said that they did. So, yes.
And so, really, the planning department just trusts that the applicant, what they've stated is truthful and that they've done what they've said they've done?
We try to take them at their professional appearance, and, yeah, yes, we do.
And if you, if you found out that they really didn't look at alternative sites, would that change your opinion of whether to approve this?
It might. But again, we have a staff member who talked to somebody on the phone and said they at least looked at one other site in the area. The other sites, I will say, if you look at a map of that area, there's obviously north of Fort, it's a whole bunch of golf course and residential zone, zoning districts. There was some conversation in the past with another carrier to locate a tower along the, or near, the driving range of the golf course. So it's not the first time that we've looked at the mile, the square mile, if you will, for locations. And I believe that was Sprint, and I believe they've been in contact with Verizon and SBA to co-locate on this tower.
You don't know that for sure, and that's really not at issue today?
No.
Okay. If I could call Ms. Faber back up? Ms. Faber, typically when we have cell phone companies who want to put a cell phone tower, they show us the coverage maps. They actually present the evidence to us. Do you, do you have anything that even, that you could show us?
I do not have that with me, but I, but I can assure you that the search ring map, I did go back and research this, and it really is right at the golf course. We are, we are right, we're kind of right where they wanted to be.
Ms. Faber, you have nothing to present at all to the council that would show that?
I do not have the search ring map, but I can, but I can certainly state truthfully, the search ring is the golf course. We are kind of the center of the search ring because they're looking to serve that area, and that's the reason, the reason that it is there. If I could also speak just for a moment to Sprint.
I have some other, I have some other questions for you. Perhaps one of the other council members will have a question regarding Sprint.
Okay.
But I guess I... You stated in the testimony for the planning, in front of the planning board, and actually, I would like to submit that testimony. Can we have that made part of the record, Buster? Is it already part of the record?
It is already.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was part of the record. You stated that there were no other places studied and that it was chosen because there was a willing landlord.
Right. And I think if I could clarify that, it might be helpful. My, I came to this site after, I believe, the Concordia School was looked at. Another representative looked at the, that location along with the golf course location. It's very hard for me to speak to exactly what was said because it was not me, nor was it my company. However, I do know in going back, because this was such an issue, such a question, you know, from obviously, you know, from obviously the board, what happened at the school and why was this location chosen? While they did look at the school, I cannot speak to conversations in detail what was really said, but this one was chosen because it was optimal. It was optimal for SBA, who's building the tower, Verizon for their engineering purposes, and also SBA's consideration of future carriers, another carrier that might want to co-locate on the tower. And specifically, that is Sprint, who is interested in this area as well. And they're both trying to serve that location, and that's why this was the chosen site.
And in your application, though, there, there was nothing that was offered in the application showing the alternate sites, or why, why this particular site was needed?
Right. And I...
It's just a yes or no.
No, I don't believe that we specifically stated other locations.
And do you have a picture of what the, the cell tower is going to look like?
Absolutely do. I absolutely do. I have two photographs here. I actually... This is what's called a camouflage tower. It's very much like an artificial Christmas tree. It's called a monopine. It's seventy-five feet tall, and you can see that the antennas are camouflaged inside. They're covered even with a, kind of a material that even has some pine needles on it. This tower at this height is able to accommodate two carriers, definitely, with Verizon being at the top. The landscape design is, it is abundant, and it's going to be landscaped in a very naturalized kind of way. There are seventy-plus white pines along with four red maples. This photograph over here, you can see the before is up top, and the bottom photograph is the proposed. When it is nestled in with other mature trees, from a distance, it really looks just like a tree. The landscaping that's going to be placed, of course, that will need to grow, and as it gets taller, it'll be a more naturalized look. So that's how this site looks from two, from two, you know, from two views.
Now, that, that, so that's going to be a seventy-five-foot tree?
Correct.
And I have pine trees. I don't have any that big in my backyard.
I know, I know, no.
And it's on top of a twenty-foot retaining wall, is that correct?
It is. They're building three retaining rolls, and they will be landscaped, and we have...
I understand that, but that means it's not just a seventy-five-foot tower. It's actually going to be about ninety-five feet.
In terms of elevation?
Since you're building it on a twenty-foot retention wall. Is that correct?
I, you know, I would have to refer to the construction drawings. I really would. I would have to refer to them. I don't want to...
I just, I was just kind of using the simple math.
Yeah.
So, and so, I mean, that definitely does tower. It's called a monopine.
It's called a monopine. And again, designed, was recommended by planning, that we submit a camouflaged site. And they're nice looking. There's another one in Omaha.
And you're saying you can't testify because you came on to this after the, supposedly after alternate sites? So you're just kind of relying on hearsay from other people in your company that alternate sites were evaluated?
And definitely, not hearsay, but certainly in conversations with our client, with SBA and with Verizon, to tell us what sites they did look at and why this one was chosen by Verizon, from an engineering perspective.
But at best, that only one other site was looked at, then?
That I can definitively speak to, yes. I know that the school was looked at.
And if I... Hold it to me real quick. And have you gone back through the application and the checklist?
Yes.
And it seems pretty clear that under number four of that checklist, that there were, there are multiple points that were not submitted in that application. Is that correct?
I would have to refer to number four. If you could read that, or if you'd like me to, I can...
Well, that's the, the requirements, that you provide alternate sites, that you provide a map showing all the sites along with the zoning classifications. Did you provide a map with all of the...
We do. We have a map that was provided with other sites.
Alan, if I, if I could call Mr. Fanslaw back up?
Okay.
Mr. Fanslaw, I think this morning we were told there was no map that was...
Well, they did, they did not submit a map that shows all the zoning classifications or alternative sites that they looked at, but there is a, it's, James has the file. There is a map in the file that shows other tower locations in and around the area.
And did they, did they demonstrate that existing towers, buildings, or other structures around there could not accommodate this tower?
Again, in the narrative of their application, yes. This is, that's actually the coverage map that we, that we received as, as part of their application. There's also a few other maps. They're, they're red and black ones, James. They're hard to, hard to see, but you can see other tower locations on them. So that, this map was part of their application as well.
I, you'll have to, and I'm sorry, you'll have to explain that because it...
The, where the, where it says Hundred Eighth and Fort, Standing Bear, those are other tower locations in the area. But it's not sites that they specifically targeted for this tower.
Okay. Again, I guess I don't, I don't, what's the relevance of this map?
You asked if there was a map that showed other tower locations on...
Oh, I see. Well, alternate, you know, locations or sites that they would have looked at that don't accommodate them.
They did not submit that, no.
Okay.
And if I could explain staff's opinion on that? Again, that's an internal checklist. It does say everything needs to be submitted. But in situations like this, where in developing areas of town where we know there are going to be more towers, and when the narrative of their application states that they looked at more places, looked at more towers, and that they've looked at other structures in the area, the map would really just show us residential zoning with no coverage. So, again, with the narrative, we don't require that a lot of the times for developing parts of the city. If we don't feel that the other material in their application is sufficient to address our concerns that we have to look at, then we would ask for that. But in this case, and in many other cases, out kind of in suburbia, if you will, we typically don't need that information for, for our staff to evaluate the application. Could be different inside city limits, inside the developed part of the city, where tower sites are probably few and far between. And if somebody proposes one that is, you know, in a, in a tighter network of homes or businesses, yeah, at that point, we probably would ask to see a map to see if there is any other locations in that area. But in areas like this, where we know more towers are going to be, we typically don't require that. require that.
So you have the performance standards, but you don't necessarily always follow them?
No, we follow them. We follow them per the site that we receive, the application that we receive. And with the narrative and where it's located, we feel a lot of the times that that narrative, that there's other, there's other sites that they looked at, we have information available to staff to look at surrounding uses, land uses, zoning patterns. A lot of times, there's not the need for the applicant to supply that information. So with the narrative, we feel that it adequately addresses that condition on that checklist.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Is that all?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing further.
Mr. Jerem.
Before you leave, Dave, what, where are we on the shot clock?
The shot clock was extended once in January at Planning Board before they approved the special use permit in February. We'd have to go back and calculate an exact date, but we're somewhere in June right now.
So the city has 150 days from the day of the last extension?
Correct.
Was it the action by the planning department or the planning board or the triggering of their filing or when they said they'd extend it? When does the clock begin?
The clock begins when they apply, but in the, at the January Planning Board meeting, they agreed to extend the shot clock. So we're going from that date.
So there's really, as we sit here in March, we're not really in that big of a hurry in terms of processing the application because we're the last stop before...
Correct.
Conceivably courted, if that were to become necessary.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, there's, appears that there's a couple months, if you want to be sure. And if council's going to lay it over today, you can always ask for it to be extended again.
Okay. Now, you had a coverage map, is that correct?
Yes.
And that was an issue in the last one that I was directly involved in. And I don't think we really got coverage maps in mind, but here...
This is the, this is the coverage map that we received as part of the application.
And is the circled pin sign, is that the one that they're proposing?
Right here, yeah. No, sorry.
Or is it up north with the red circle in the white area?
No, it is...
Want to make sure the record's clear.
It is. Sorry, it is that area, yeah, with the circle.
And it says O M A hyphen...
Standing Bear.
Standing Bear.
Correct.
Okay. Am I, and we just saw something on social media recently about people looking at a dress and thinking it was different colors. What was that, the colors? Some people thought it was, yeah.
Yeah, the dress.
So I don't trust my eyes anymore after that, but it appears to be a black clip in a light blue area of the city with basically no coverage until you reach red. Is that what the blue means, or is that light coverage? What is the blue?
The blue's coverage.
Okay.
So the white is non-covered areas.
The white is?
Right.
And what does the red mean?
The red is everything that is covered at the height of 41 feet, if the tower was 41 feet.
And is this data coverage, or is this other coverage? And there were two types. Ms. Faber said something about this project is for data, I thought I heard her say. And I'm wondering if this map is a data map, or is this another kind of a map?
I, we understand it to be a coverage map, but...
Maybe Ms. Faber can come up and tell us.
I believe the ma...
Well, you're going to have to tell us who you are again for the record.
Susan Faber with Black and Beach. I believe that this is an overall coverage map. I have a map that's specific to that site.
Well, can you tell me what it is this means, this blue and this red and...
Okay. And I'm just going to take a look at it for a second. I was not prepared to address this map today, and I certainly need just a second to look at it.
If you can't, I don't want to put you on the spot if you're not prepared today. Did you, we can come back to this. Do you have your own map?
I do have a map. I do have a coverage map.
Do you want to put that up on the Elmo?
Sure.
And is the map that's currently on there, the planning department's map?
Yes, it is.
That's from your files, just so that we keep the record straight.
As part of our application, there's a letter from Verizon Wireless that is, again, part of the, part of our file, that talks about this, should I turn that?
That doesn't look like a map.
No, no, no. That talks about a capacity site and what that means and the kind of service that it provides. Now, these are different sites, and I'm going to start with, I'm sorry, do I have the coverage maps by any chance? I'm sorry to... This is the site here. With the site on air, you can see that it's all red.
And again, because if this ends up in court, when you say this is the site here or there...
Right here.
And it says...
The name is Standing Bear. That is the name of this site. If there were other colors, red shows where the site is on air and that it is solid coverage, red being solid coverage.
So that's reddish, pink?
Right.
That looks, you're saying is solid coverage?
Solid coverage.
All right.
With this site on air. Solid coverage as well as solid data speed.
All right. So why...
And this is with it on air. When I say with it on air, once the site is built, once the site is built. This is kind of an after map, showing that if we build this site, there will be solid coverage. There'll be no dark spots, no, no...
So the preceding map that had blue in it, that the planning department filed was represented as a coverage map, you're not prepared to say what that blue means here today?
Right. This is a very different map. This map does not correspond to that map at all. This was a map that was submitted to the planning department, I believe, to show them all of our sites in the area.
Okay. You've answered my questions. Can I have Alan back up, please?
Alan Teelen with the City Law Department.
The planning department has said that from their perspective, this complies with the showing that this, under the act and their rules, the provider that's requesting the tower must do. The planning board made a similar recommendation, albeit with a height modification recommendation. Does the existence of those two findings, what is the significance of that in terms of if this were to land in the federal court versus what we do here today? Assuming we decide something here today.
Well, I guess I can speak from experience. In the 52nd Hamilton Tower case that went to federal court, the planning department similarly recommended in favor of it and described how it met the city's requirements. And that was an obstacle to us to overcome when we did go into federal court and try to uphold the denial of that tower. Now, I'm somewhat reluctant to engage in the strengths or weaknesses of our case here.
You don't want to limit your ability to defend us if you're across the street.
Right. But what I just mentioned about the Hamilton Street case is, I mean, that's, that's experience and that's public record in the court orders.
Okay. Now, in terms of the coverage map, we'll call it, lack of clarity as to what the planning department's file shows, it would appear to me that there's a reasonable question as to what that blue color means in terms of the current means or needs of the cell carriers to address the market conditions in terms of whether there's adequate coverage, either Dell or data or traditional communication. So if we were to lay this over, to get clarity on at least the coverage maps and perhaps to allow Black and Beach to obtain more definitive information with regard to what they're saying is, was a search to look at other sites that their engineers at Verizon and/or Sprint ruled out or ruled in in terms of what the sweet spot for coverage was, would that, regardless of what our decision is from either side, help substantiate what we do?
A clearer record would be helpful here, and especially knowing that we've got a lot of time on the time, on the shot clock, that would be helpful.
It seems to me that we would be speculating as to whether there is adequate coverage. I know that there was one in this area that came, and I think it was Sprint, a little further to the north, a year or two ago, on Ida, that we denied. And then after that, by coincidence, I was at someone's 60th birthday party up there, and my cellphone didn't work. And I said they were right. So I think it might help me understand the coverage situation, whether it's data or other service, to lay this over. And also would help me decide to get more information from Black and Beach as to where else their clients looked and just why this is, that it's the sweet spot versus the 3/10 of a mile away and why that doesn't necessarily, in terms of proximity, mean that it's a substantially similar site, like Ms. Faber was saying. And I don't think, from my perspective here today, that you've provided me the level of information that I would feel comfortable with. So I would feel better if the council would lay this over and looking to my right here towards the clerk, so I don't say the wrong date when we're not meeting or something.
We...
Would four weeks?
Four weeks is fine.
Okay. I would think that would probably help us have a record at least from which, in my perspective, it appears like, well, they knew what they were considering when they, when they made their decision. Now, having said that, I would add a general commentary, not indicative of how I'm leaning one way or another, because right now I don't have enough to lean one way or another until I get this additional information, if we can lay it over. I would say, having gone through this myself, it seems like I'm real, history has a way of repeating itself, even with not, wasn't Black and Beach with the one I went through in my district. It was a different company on behalf of AT&amp;T. And it was very puzzling to me why so far into it it had gotten before we saw, at our level, or heard from a representative of the carrier. And at least in the one I went through, when we finally did catch that one, they were amenable to a neighborhood meeting. And there was a local country club that opened up their big ballroom, and the neighbors turned out in force. And it really impressed me that although it wasn't a pleasant thing to go through, a room full of people who don't want the tower in their neighborhood, there were a couple friendlies there. It was a meaningful process in terms of helping that representative understand the neighborhood and then work with the council member to better understand where I was coming from. And so I think if we laid it over for four weeks, not only would you have the opportunity to get the additional information that I was asking for, it would also help you have a meeting with the neighborhood. And it may not be pleasant, it may not be fun, but I think they're, they should be given the respect and courtesy to hear them out and present in detail before you come back here just why it is this spot is preferable over the Concordia site or some other site. And so what I would do is move to lay over for four weeks.
Thank you. I'll add too, I think I support that layover. I've had experience with these, as we all have, and I think the one at 52nd Hamilton that was mentioned was in my district, and it kind of turned out to be the poster boy for these several years ago. And I think, I'm sure his residents know, it can be an act of competing priorities or even frustration in terms of local decision-making because of the federal communications law that was cited and how that supersedes our decision-making in many cases with something like this. But I also understand the neighborhood's opposition to what's being proposed here. But I think the key question's our, our coverage, and that was a little unclear today, at least by the maps that we had present, that I think does deserve a deeper dive and maybe some clarification in four weeks, or at a neighborhood meeting coming up, or however that gets determined prior to them, to help determine that question. Secondly, it was mentioned to the, the planning department's application checklist, I don't think that's as influential as our legal guidelines, but I think it is a guideline the city has in a request of applicants to show that they've at least analyzed some alternative sites. I think it actually says alternative sites that don't require a special use permit. And I think the site, sites being discussed here as alternatives would require still a permit, so I'm not sure that's at a citing factor, but certainly, certainly justifies a deeper dive as well in terms of our analysis of this case and a potential decision, I guess, in four weeks. So I'd recommend that those three things get worked on and get clarified prior to that time, and would support the layover here today for those reasons. Ms. Milton?
Well, and I'd just like to say, I think that's very generous of you, Councilman Jerem, that you're giving the applicant some, some more time, because I think it's, I'm taken aback just a little bit that when we're asking for the two things that really the law requires the applicant to prove is that a gap in coverage exists and that the provider has explored all reasonable alternatives that may be a less intrusive way to fill the gap. I mean, those are the two most important things. And when I asked, number one, when I came in here today, I wasn't expecting to ask the question about the gap in coverage. I thought that was covered, and we don't really know. Nothing could be presented today by either planning or the applicant that shows there is even a gap in coverage. And second, there is nothing that the applicant has showed us that they've explored all reasonable alternatives, just, well, we looked at one and, well, we like this other one better. So I guess walking in here today, when, you know, the homeowners association, the neighborhood, they've shown up to both meetings, they've, they were prepared. And then when I have the applicant that actually has the burden to prove these two things walks up here and says, well, I wasn't really prepared for that today. And I think Councilman Jerem, and I both know, have you ever been in a trial and you told the judge, well, I'm sorry, I really wasn't prepared for that today? I mean, you've got, you've got a date that you need to present your evidence, you should be presenting it. So I guess the fact that Councilman Jerem is willing to give you a second chance to come prepared next time, my only, my only problem is I've never been in contact with you. Nobody, nobody from Verizon, the applicant, has not called and spoken to me. And I am the council member, you may not know, I'm the council member of this district. Just because the residents here live in an SID, they are still residents, I believe, of my district within that three-mile, that three-mile range. So the only way I would actually even go along with any kind of layover today would be if, Ms. Faber, you would agree to stay back after this meeting, if you would wait so I can get your contact information, and that there's a promise that to the people that are here, that we're actually going to have a productive meeting with your, with you or your company, whoever's going to represent Verizon. Because without that, then I think the layover is pointless. If there's no way for us to get in touch with, with you or a meeting doesn't happen. And I'm sure I could work with the homeowners association to find an adequate spot. and I'm sure I could work with the homeowners association to find an adequate spot out in our district to do that.
Can I respond?
Are you, I mean, I, if you could come up, are you willing to meet with the neighbors? Okay, that, that's my question.
Without a doubt. We did host a neighborhood meeting, so I just wanted to be clear about that. I believe it was on January 21st, because that had been recommended, and we definitely, I definitely did that. I, I had a neighborhood meeting at the country club. And of course I will stay after this meeting and meet with you. I had no idea that I should have reached out to you, I was not directed to do so. Absolutely, I will stay, and we will certainly talk. Coverage maps are part of our application packet, which I know has been submitted. I am sorry that I did not, and, and the coverage map that I was showing you is the map that I had submitted with our application. It shows the site before and after. What I showed you here this afternoon was the coverage after, where it is solid red, which means that the coverage is solid and good. So I, I respect, and I'm very grateful, you know, to stay afterward and, and speak to you more in depth.
Thank you. I'm not, I mean, I just want to say, I'm not in favor of the layover. I, I don't think there was enough evidence presented today, and I think we should vote on it instead of dragging the neighbors through. Further discussions, if the discussions are not, if we're not even going to consider any alternate site.
Thank you, Mr. Jerem, your light on?
Yeah. I guess, using the, the court analogy, I'm more interested in making sure that if the taxpayers have to defend a lawsuit, that we have a record that can defend what our action is. And I think in the lawsuit on 52nd and Hamilton, where the city lost, Mr. Thielen, would you come up? If this, save your name.
Alan Thielen with the Law Department.
If the city loses those lawsuits, does the act provide for an award of attorney's fees to the carrier?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Just court costs.
So you'd have to spend your time over in federal court defending an action, and then court costs if we lost. And you said it would help us clarify the record in making our decisions. So there may be this, kind of using the court analogy, sometimes you run into hardcore judges, and sometimes you run into ones that basically want to make sure, to their satisfaction, that everyone's given a fair chance. And, and you have two sets of eyes looking at the same case, one saying you've had your chance, one saying, bring us the more engineering stuff and do that in a month. Now...
Whichever way you go, I think court would be impressed by the idea of making the record more clearer.
Right. And so, Ms. Faber, I appreciate your willingness to stay, and again, using the, the judge analogy, you've been invited back to chambers for a private conversation, and I'm sure that that's, that's not something I'm going to be attending, but I'm sure. Having gone through those once or twice in my law career, it's something we all learn from. So, motion's...
Yeah, I think that's right. I think we, I think the issue is we don't have enough information to decide either way today convincingly, and that's why I'm supportive of the layover. And for the record, I'm not so interested in the map of how it looks if it's built, I'm interested in the map that shows the coverage is absolutely needed, so that's something we can clarify next time as well. I think that's all I had. One more light, Mr. Pauls.
I'm just curious where this other big tree is around, so let somebody let me know where that other big tree, so I can go out and take a look at it.
The location of the other pine.
You're right, the mono pine. Okay, well, okay, we'll find it.
Afterwards, okay. Thank you. There's a motion to lay over four weeks and a second. Roll call.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's a layover four weeks, five to zero. Resolutions rate Keno, items 37 and 38 will take together. 37 is a resolution that Big Red is granted approval to operate a satellite Keno location at the California Bar, 510, 512, North 33rd Street. And 38 is the Crossbones Bar at 5611 South 36th Street.
Public hearings, the number 37 and 38 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Katrina Coffey, I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 11248 John vault Boulevard. I have with me today the owner of the Crossbones, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. And for the record, the owner of the California Bar was here earlier as well, but had some business to take care of, and I said, that's fine, I'm sure Ms. Coffey will get it handled.
I hope so.
All right. Any other proponents today that want to speak? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
37, 38 are adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any members of City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken out by City Council meeting following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearings on agenda items number 39 through 43 were held on March 17th. Roll call.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
39 through 43 are passed, seven to zero.
Public hearings. Thank you. The public hearings on agenda items number 44 through 53 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. See, none. Public hearings are closed. Is there a motion? Second. Roll call.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
44 through 53 are adopted, five to zero. Resolution, item number 54, resolution that the attached 30 Metropolitan Place Taxation and Financing Renewal Project Plan located northeast of 30 Ethon Fort Street is hereby approved.
Public hearing number 54 is today. Proponents, please. Ms. Hadley.
Good afternoon. Bridgette Hadley, City Planning. For you is a project to redevelop a, a site that has been in need of much redevelopment. It is the former Mr. C. site at 30th and Fort. 30th is here, Fort Street is here. The former restaurant was located at this site. It is, it has been demolished, but this was the former site. And this particular project has been in discussion with the planning department for a little while, knowing that the site needed to be redeveloped, needed, needed to be repurposed, and the applicant for TIF, which is also the developer, has come forward and presented a project that will involve a five-story mixed-use project with 110 apartments, and then ground floor commercial, 121,000 square feet of total, square feet for the project, and 11,000 square feet of ground floor commercial. Here is a site layout, if you can zoom in. This is 30th Street, and this kind of shows where the commercial piece would be with residential units starting here, and then four levels above, or four stories above, for a total of, again, 110 apartment units. It will be a low-income housing tax credit project, which will provide affordable housing in this particular area. The developer presumes that a lot of the, the tenants will be occupant, or not occupants, rather, but will also attend Metro Community College, as this is directly east of that community site, where there is a lot of redevelopment occurring. And I do have a rendering. This particular rendering is looking, is actually at the northeast corner of the finished site, looking back at the building. And then this particular rendering is actually standing at the 30th and Fort intersection, looking directly at the site, so how it would look, and so this would be the commercial piece of it, and then the rest here is the residential. There will be 100, almost 167 to 168 off-site parking stalls, and then about 39 on-street parking along, mostly along 29th Street. This project does meet our community development law, it also meets our TIF guidelines, represents a million, rather, in TIF-eligible expenses that TIF will be used for, and it also represents a project with a cost of a little over 16 million. And with that, I would ask for your approval. We do have a representative of the developer here, but I would ask for your approval.
Thanks, Bridgette. And did you say the timeline of construction? I think I might have missed that.
No, I didn't. They've already started demolishing the site, and the actual, I think the, they contemplate being done spring of 2016.
Okay.
So thereabouts.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today that want to speak? See, none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Second. Roll call.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
54 is adopted, five to zero. Item 55, resoluting the attached amendment to the Omaha Council plus fiscal year 2013 and 2014 consolidated submission for community planning and development program is hereby approved.
Public hearing number 55 is today. Proponents, please. Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
55 is adopted, five to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule 7F, agenda items number 56 through 57 shall be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing pursuant to City Council Rule 70. The public hearing agenda items 58 through 61 shall be held on the third reading, ordinance is on second reading. Item 62, ordinance authorizing issue of a purchase order to painting and more for maintenance painting and coating at the wastewater treatment plants.
Public hearing number 62 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 63, ordinance to contest appropriating properties located in the Deer Park Neighborhood Plan area for implementation of that plan.
Public hearing number 63 is today. Are there any proponents?
My name's Elizabeth Posey. I live at 2906 South 18th Street. I am a board member of the Deer Park Neighborhood Association here, and I'm representing them today. We just want to acknowledge that this is the first step in a long process for the redevelopment of this area. We've been working with the city through the planning department for a while now, and specifically on the needs of the neighborhood, and we feel that this is the first step in implementing those strategies. We'd like to thank the council for moving this forward and help bring strength and new life to our neighborhood.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Any other proponents?
Emily Anderson, Dealed Anderson Architecture. I'm a resident and a business owner in the Deer Park Neighborhood. I would like to express my support for the ordinance, which helps to implement the Deer Park redevelopment plan. There is a lot of housing in the area that is distressed, and this ordinance used for the implementation of the plan will help to improve the appearance of the neighborhood, and help to ensure that it continues to be a thriving neighborhood that is a good place to live and a safe place to live.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See, none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Gurnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to all of you for testifying today in regards to, and I, and I know all of you that are remaining in this very crowded chamber right now, that it's great, not only you have businesses there, you live there, actively involved with the Neighborhood Association, and actively involved not just improving a particular street, but not just improving a particular community, but making sure that, that, that commitment is an outreach to the entire city. And, and that's very pleasing for, at least for me to know, as the elected official in that area, and also a resident in that area, if I, if I may add, that if we have an opportunity to, as elected officials, to promote various plans throughout the city, I, since being here for 14 years, have seen redevelopment plans, and know that there are more on the horizon, and each one that comes along can benefit from lessons learned from previous ones. And by the time that we reach the end of the spectrum, you know, we, we could have nothing but an, an awesome city with just terrific neighborhoods. Look at the, look at the explosion of, of Midtown in the development there, and the concerns that the Midtown Neighborhood Alliance has, and the representation that they have on various topics and developments and concerns that is just an awesome feeling just watching that. Would, I'd love to have a stimulus that got all of that started in District 4. Yeah, I sure would have. That, that would have been great to have a, an awesome economic engine come forward with a, a huge offer, and, and not just talk, but they made it happen. But all the other ones, I think, are learning from the best practices of that one, some of, maybe some errors from those of the smaller ones that have occurred over the years. This is, I, I see nothing but the best coming out of these plans as, as we move forward. So again, I thank you for taking and carving out time out of your busy schedules and coming down. And the architect business, again, welcome to the, to the neighborhood. Apollon, Visual, and Culinary Arts Theater, awesome. Keep up the good work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I, I will be supporting this too, and I was glad to hear certain words throughout your presentation and what your remarks were in terms of lessons learned. This is the first in a long process, I think I heard you say, and, and those are critical because my district, although it has a lot of really bright spots going on right now in downtown and Midtown, there's a part of the district that, that people feel like has a long way to go too, and that's in the Columbus Park Lynch Park area, where we have high concentrations of poverty and a moderate level of unemployment. And so, the Columbus Park area came through this process, I think in the early years of when, after I was elected, and we had, we had, I think, elevated expectations to such that now that we're looking at other areas of the city that are being targeted, with the limited funds available, the lesson learned from our area was, the impact isn't as, as big and deep as you, you'd want to do, and you're committed to doing over this long process. So I admire your, your commitment to this, and your investment in the Venton Street quarter, particularly with your business, and your business, and your living in the community, I think will really help catapult that, and I think there's some talk about business improvement districts in various places in the south part of our city now, which will also help catapult things if they go. And if there's ways that we can work together to leverage more funding, which the planning director said he was hoping to try to do, I'm all in and want to help you do that, because it is, it is really a neat area. And I don't think, one thing that you mentioned was, it also happens we were, I think you grew up, so you have that going for you too, so, good luck.
Thank you. Now for the lights.
Item 64, orders to approve the purchase of a three-year maintenance service for, from Safewear to provide extended equipment maintenance for gas sensors.
Public hearing number 64 is today. Any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 65, ordinance to transfer unaccompanied appropriations in the 2014 budget city of Omaha for wage adjustment accounts to the city departments.
Public hearing number 65 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Curtis, I might just have you address this, this item, just because it's, it is a large amount of money being transferred on, on the agenda, $6 million worth, as a result of the recent civilian contracts approved. So if you wouldn't mind just giving a short summary of what we talked about at Finance Community Day as to why that's happening, why in some respects it looks, the rationale for why it's dispersed through all the city departments the way it is, and why in some cases, I believe that's wages and pension, as to why those numbers sometimes look more than what you, what you might expect, and, and then maybe address the fund.
move across all funds. So it's not only the general fund, but two other big funds would be street and highway and sewer. It does calculate the back calculation for pension, which is one of the things that you had mentioned, and in some cases, City Council being an example, it looks rather heavily weighted towards the pension, because that was the biggest shortfall, because that change was about seven percent from 2012, the base year, through 2014 was about a seven percent difference.
Thank you. And the reason why this is on our agenda is because to transfer money out of that fund takes City Council action, and it would also take City Council action in the future to transfer funds needed possibly for the fire contract or a police contract, if there is one. Same process, right?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Next item.
Item sixty-six, special ordinance allowing special tax for removal of litter groups 2015-04.
Public hearing number sixty-six is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item sixty-eight, special ordinance allowing special tax for cutting and clearing weeds, grass, and worthless vegetation, group number 2015-05, warrant for communications from Wells Fargo and a document submitted by the Parks Department.
Public hearing number sixty-seven is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item sixty-eight, special ordinance allowing special tax for cutting and clearing weeds, grass, and worthless vegetation, group 2015-06.
Public hearing number sixty-eight is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Pursuant City Council Rule 70, the public hearing agenda items sixty-nine through seventy-four shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing agenda items seventy-five through eighty-three shall be held on the second reading.
Roll call.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Three thirty-three. We stand adjourned.